Good evening, everybody. What's today? Today is a special meeting Wednesday, October 26th. And it is 5:32. Board of Selectmen's meeting here in the town of Free Town. President, our selectman.
Bob Jones.
Select woman.
Pacico.
And Paul Sadik. Town Administrator.
Jack Healy.
And our important administrative assistant with a nice smile, Ally Galt. All right, so what do we got on the agenda? Anybody recording the meeting other than?
Pre-Care.
I am.
And Ally's recording the meeting also. Okay, very good. Anybody here for weekly public discussion? Nothing heard. All right. First thing on the agenda, approve the designer selection procedure. I'll turn it over to the Chairman of the Building Committee.
Okay, as we went over this before with Attorney Rich at our meeting, before we go out for an OPM, the Board needs to adopt and approve these procedures for designer selection. And like he inferred at the meeting, that this will carry over to any other building project that we go, that we do down the line. So once these are approved, we don't have to really go back and address it unless we feel like there's something that we want to change. So I don't know if the Board had any time to look at this over or had any questions about it.
The question I had was more to Building Committee. Does Building Committee gonna have any input on the design phase of it, the design, the phase we're in right now?
Well, we're, that's one of the things that we're gonna talk about tonight, but like, do we want to make a building station committee? Like a subcommittee of the Building Committee that we have now? But neither here nor there, it's only the Board of Selectmen that can adopt these procedures.
Right. I didn't know if you wanted to seek a recommendation from the Building Committee first.
We could do that, but I mean, we're the ones flipping the bill at the end of the day.
Oh, yeah.
So I have no, I mean, we can keep our meeting open and we can talk to them and then at the end of the meeting, we can vote on this if you want. But it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me either way. But definitely, we, we need to talk to the Building Committee because I'm not so sure that everybody on that Building Committee is gonna want to be part of the police station Building Committee. I know that I want to. I'm not sure if, you know, the Council on Aging will member, or Jeanette will want to, or any of the other ones. So I think that we'll certainly have a subset of that committee and then also ask for other people in the community that have knowledge in construction or engineering or any of those facets to come in and join us at that time. I don't think that we want to make the committee so large that it's not a doable committee. I think you want to keep it somewhat manageable, so.
I think that while we're working on the police station, and that's the only thing that we're gonna be working on in the near future, we should give the people the opportunity as to whether they even want to be part of it.
Right, absolutely.
And I think that, that way they will not waste.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, 'cause it's gonna be a lot of work. There's gonna be a lot of work between now and when we go forward for a debt exclusion. So, you know, there could be a time where we could be meeting every other week, every other week depending on what needs to be done and how quickly, how quickly but yet efficiently we want to make sure that this gets us done because we only have one shot. We want to make sure that we don't second guess ourselves as we go forward.
So we'll hold this until we get the Building Committee in here later?
I'm not sure they have this in their packets, do they, Tim? Okay.
It's all in handouts.
Just us.
You can go over it.
Yeah, we'll go over it, okay.
They're in handouts for the whole committee, though.
Okay. So we're gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna adjourn. We're gonna stay open until?
We'll stay open and then if anybody, yep. But do you, while we just have this open for now, is there anything that you guys looked this over and had any issues or any, any, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. It's really pretty basic and there isn't really a lot that you can influence this in any way, so.
Well, I mean, that comes right from the state.
Yeah, exactly.
The seizures, the seizures.
Right, I have no issue.
Okay. All right, so we'll vote at this, on this at the end of the meeting.
All right. Number two on the agenda here is discuss the Town Hall computer issues. Now, I don't know how much, I guess I gotta talk about it while we're on camera here, so I'm gonna tell you what happened. I'm sure you guys must know a little bit about it. Last Thursday, the server went down. Unfortunately, we had two hard drives go and they had to be audited. They came in yesterday. Charlie Starkwell got them in and got the server back up and running, limping, as he calls it, right now because only two of the drives are working. There's something wrong with the server. The server's been there for, it's gotta be eight years now. And we were able this morning to finish up with a backup tape of all I've had, so we're good. We got the backup tape. But we're really in a predicament because the server really has to be replaced and we, we have to bite the bullet. I was talking with Kim today regarding the finances and she suggests we go out for a, to our Finance Committee for a emergency transfer of $10,000. Your agenda has preliminary information in it as to the cost. These costs are, costs that, there's no markup on these items. These are off the Dell website, which has, you know, contracts with government agencies, so we're getting the government rate. In fact, Ally would be the person that would audit, well, you audit all our stuff through, through Dell. So there's no markup on what you're seeing here from Charlie. There is gonna be a charge for installing all this stuff and getting it running. One of the pages on here talks about Exchange Online. And what Exchange Online is, is, I think, you know, the problems we've had with email. The problems we've had with email is because we have an in-house Exchange Server and that was put in probably eight years ago when the server was put in. That's why we're getting all these spam things too, and that's why if our server goes down, we have no communications at all. Charlie is suggesting that, and this is some of the, this is the issue, the things that they use in other client, that other clients use, and this is Exchange Online. It's a Microsoft Exchange Server that's online. It costs $4 a month for each, each PC that we have online with an email address. And so we figured it out today. We figured like, we rounded it up to like 50. So that's $200 a month, it's gonna be $2,400 a year. But we will never, we will not be down on email, number one. And number two, if our server's down, you can still get your email, any one of us that has, has a town email address can get the email on their own browser. So he's suggesting that. And he's, definitely, we've gotta do something almost immediately for the server. So that's where we're at, so.
Can I ask, I wish he was here. Why go with Microsoft instead of Google?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just saying like, 'cause the schools got away from all Microsoft and now on all, all Google. So I'm just don't know if.
The operating systems are Microsoft, all these computers.
Yeah, it was on ours, too. But we, we changed, we changed all of that over to Google and Google Docs and Google email and everything, so I just wasn't sure like what the difference is between the Microsoft over and that part of it.
Mostly.
They had to, they had to change, we had to change everything.
You had to change everything.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, mostly.
I wasn't sure what the, if there, if it was a better product or, that's not me. Let that be heard.
I can tell you right now that VADA runs on, VADA runs on Microsoft. VADA runs on Access data files.
Well, that's why I asked. I wasn't sure like.
I don't think you want to get into that. And all our machines that we have, all the new machines, well, all the machines, because they're all new as of last year, they all have office on them. And our license for each one of those machines were 300 bucks, so I don't think we want to mess with.
Well, I have no idea, so I, I just asked.
We just need to.
Well, I think it's two separate issues either way. I think the first issue is obviously getting the server.
Yeah, we need to get that.
Supported and up and running.
But, but as he does, as he redoes the server, this is the time to make the change over.
Yeah, but if you did have concerns with maybe another user, another provider, would also be time to explore that, too, where the server needs to get fixed no matter what we do.
But when he fixes the server, this is when this should, 'cause he has to rebuild all this stuff, a new server.
You're not gonna put Windows, the operating system on NT back on the server and?
Well, it's a, it's a brand new operating system with the new server coming out. Our operating system, the old NT, is old.
Yeah. I mean, this, so that's gonna affect the operating systems, is more my question. He can't get the system up and running unless we decide on doing the exchange now, the outlet.
Yeah, because you, you don't even want the exchange on our, on our system. But you guys can talk to him, you know? Give him a call. He was explaining it today and this is his recommendation.
And how long is this gonna take him to?
Once we get the stuff.
Yeah.
It's probably gonna take him, probably two days to get the server up and running and he's gonna have a backup server.
Well, that was my other question. Is it gonna be a redundancy and are we gonna put some pots and maybe on the shelf, common things? Fan, fans, fans and stuff? A hard drive, put a hard drive off?
Well, he actually had an extra hard drive.
So we have a crash it to swap out instead of wait?
Yeah.
To get it?
Yeah.
Is that built into this number here, any of that?
This number here?
Yeah.
So redundant hard drive?
A redundant hard drive.
I think this, this machine comes with, I believe, five hard drives.
Are you talking about the server number?
Yeah, sure.
I have a new server, a new number for the server because this is the government. I had to call and get.
Is it cheaper?
Yeah, I had to call and get a new number.
It's a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
And how much for the new tape drive?
That is all in process, that number's all.
What do you mean, like a ditto tape drive?
Yeah.
Of the big tape drive?
Yeah, this is everything.
It includes everything?
This includes.
Well, that's not bad at all.
It's half.
That's not bad.
It's twelve.
Yeah. Okay.
What's the number?
Four.
4,000. We should still go in for the, I think we should still go in for the extra, we don't, it just goes back, right?
Well, they're gonna say that you need to deplete the account before you go back in there.
We don't, the account is already.
Yeah.
What's your name, Kim gave us some figures already. This is the issue here.
I just want to make sure there's a couple of common crash, things that happen, that go bad on service.
Yeah, because I, here's the thing, like, we, there were so many things held up because due to this. I mean, it was just the most ridiculous thing, like, we can't get anything done and really we actually paid people to be in their offices with, they couldn't get things done because there was nothing that they could do. So, I mean, certainly, any way we can prevent this from happening again needs to take place. And then we also have to be forthright in knowing that, are we doing everything we can with everything that's available to ensure that this won't happen again? And I don't know if that, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. You can't foresee things like that, but like you were saying, the extra parts, the, you know, the.
Well, I just.
We can certainly tell.
Doing with computer stuff in the past, things go obsolete pretty quick in the computer world, so if you don't have a hard drive, two years from now, that hard drive isn't gonna be available and now you're gonna try and upgrade to a hard drive and, and make it work, you know?
We can wait a couple of weeks and have them come in and talk to us.
No, we can't wait.
I don't think it's a spotlight yet.
No, no, I don't think that.
I just don't want to, we're gonna, I don't, what number we're gonna use? Are we gonna use the 4,032 or are we gonna use?
I think we should go in for a request for at least 10,000, just to be on the safe side to convert everything over. We're not gonna spend it all because this is certainly $3,000 less.
Right.
Well, you still need more money because you're gonna need more money to support each user on it, 'cause you have, you need that $2,400 as well.
For, for the.
You need the $2,400 for the annual payment.
Right.
Right.
And then you need 750 for the email.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so you still need over and above this, the four thousand.
And then his fee of install.
And then MS Online, yeah.
His fee isn't included.
And hit the installation fee for him, which I don't know.
Well, Kim thought maybe we could, we could slide by with what we had with the installation.
On top of this, on top of this four, it looks like you're gonna need another 3,400 because you're gonna need 850 for the Microsoft to put that on the local desktops and you're gonna need 750 for the email accounts, then you're gonna need about $2,400 for the yearly fees. So just round that up, that's about $3,400.
So what?
So you're gonna need 34 on top of the four anyway.
So you're around 7,500 right now, between the two of that, and then there's installation costs.
And then there's installation, so 10,000 is not out of the realm.
No, 10,000 is a reasonable figure.
Okay. I'll make a motion to forward a request to the Finance Committee in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, once you make it up, Jack, you can, you can say we've approved it.
Okay.
All right. Thank God, that one, we, it was touch and go, I'll tell you, on the backup. All right, so that's done.
Well, let, let's just stay on the subject for one, just a tad longer. So I know you won't be here, but I think it's something that we're gonna need to look at for the line item for the budget coming up. I mean, you'll be here up until the, you know, April, but.
Yeah.
We'll definitely need to look at that line item and I'd rather have him be proactive and come up with what we need to look at from now until the end of the year or now until the end of next fiscal year.
Yes, yes.
So then that way we have that ready and available in that line item.
A budget, aye.
Because we do have an IT line item, but I mean, we really didn't discuss it all that much this year, thinking that we had everything in there, but we're supposed to be like on a plan of when to do the replacement for computers and when to update things, so I really think he needs to take a look at that so we know what's going on for the following fiscal year.
Well, two years ago, we replaced all the computers because the operating system was no longer in support. So our, mostly our machines are, right now, they're, they're two years old, but we never did anything with the server, you know?
All right.
All right. Discuss a Town Hall Facebook page.
And there's the face of the Facebook page.
Who wants a Facebook page?
Tim.
Tim, you want a Facebook page?
Robbie.
Love you.
I always hope someone on the board wanted one.
Yeah, actually, I, I think it would be a way to get information out from the Board to the public besides just the newspaper and the town website. A lot of information that has been discussed in front of the meetings aren't making, or isn't making it to the, to the public. There is some concern with it because the traffic, the traffic is two-way, so as you put things out, your response is, is gonna be incoming. But I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea to have some, even if it's not Facebook, a mechanism to get the word out to people about what's going on, what decisions have been made, some of the, maybe the, some of the stuff that we hear, the stuff that went into the decision, made the decision, and why we made the decision we made. Just this couple of examples between, people didn't realize when the trash was changing, the whole snowplow thing, when that was all, we went through all the discussions and why we were gonna change the snow, people didn't realize all that stuff. They just think, well, here they are trying to change everything and, you know, somebody's just kind of changed the way we've been doing business all these years and that's not, that wasn't the case. You know, these things will come and come and go.
I just wanna, I, I agree that we need to do so, more social media because it is, look, I don't know, there's a Free Towners page and I ended up addressing something on that page, but then I was like, oh my God, can they look at what I post and can they look at my pictures and, I don't know, I didn't even think about how to protect my own privacy. So I guess my question would be, if we did have a page, how do we set it up that not, how do, how do we control what, I don't want to control people and what they say, but control negativity and like people coming on and just blasting for no reason at all? How do we control that kind of stuff? Do you know, Tim?
Well, that was, when it was suggested that, you know, we do the Facebook page, that's exactly, my first thought, too, is, you know, just turn into, you know, just lists of, like a comment box, basically. But, so I got in touch with, I basically just did a search on Facebook, Town Hall, and see what local pages come up. I got in touch with West Bridgewater. They have one, it's a verified account, it's got a little check mark and everything. And they basically said, you know, I, I asked them the same thing, what, is there an issue with comments? Because I noticed on a lot of their posts, they didn't have a lot of negative comments. They said, and much to my surprise, that they don't have an issue with it. They don't moderate it, it's, they just post, they keep it active and like they said, like you, like you mentioned, that it's, it's just getting the word out, that kind of thing. They, they said typically, if there is any sort of controversial thing, the people take the post and then go talk about it in a different group, which we already have them doing. So they said it's really not an issue. And they also mentioned that when they, someone puts a comment up with wrong information, they just correct the information and that usually stops the problem, which I think is, reading some of the comments on Free Towners, as you mentioned, I feel like if we had stepped in and given the right information initially, it would have stopped a lot of the issues going forward. But I was, I was rather surprised when they said they didn't have a problem with the negative comments.
It's only a one-way valve, is that what you're saying? We can put, post things up?
It's not. You can't shut off comments on, you can shut off, there's two, two types of comments you can make. You can, people can write posts on your page or they can put comments on posts that you make. You can shut off the posting part, so there's, you won't have this big long rant, you won't have the comment box, like I mentioned. But if we put out a post that says like, you know, the hazardous waste day, people can still write on there, you know, whatever comments they want to put.
Where is it, what time?
Right, they can put that, but they could also change the subject, you know?
Right, I mean, so you have more control.
Right.
And you know what, I, I don't have a big issue, but I think, first of all, you're gonna have to have somebody monitor this.
Right.
Okay? That means we're gonna add another level and you get into a, you get into people that just want to antagonize. If that's what you guys want to do, then go do it. I won't go for it. This, I mean, this is crazy, this. You got enough, you know, what I, and I don't go on Facebook, but I hear a lot about Facebook, like the Free Towners page. I mean, there was a lot of stuff going on the Free Towners page, right? But the people that were making the comments, they don't usually come in and sit down here and discuss it with us.
You could look at it as if the Facebook page could be us reaching out to those people and giving them the correct information.
We have a facility on our website. All people have to do is give us their email address and we could, any department can send them information.
Yep.
Every time we have something new going out. Not many people sign up for it.
Well, I, I think that we're in different eras.
You're right. We're in a different era, you're absolutely right.
And I actually.
You're not that much younger than me.
I actually, let's try that again. I actually look to like the Free Town Hall and Phil School web page on Facebook and things like that and actually, I'm in the process of creating a Facebook page for the extended programs because.
A huge list, gigantic.
Really quickly, that is the one way people connect with us and that's the one way that we can connect with people. And I think it's, sometimes it's, it takes us way too long to get the correct information out and this is actually a here and now kind of thing. So you can actually stop the conversation before it even goes on and on and on and on and on. And I don't think that there's anything that doesn't really hurt us to at least do it on a trial basis. If it doesn't work, we can take it down in a month and say, okay, we cut the page off and we're done. But I think that, you know, we have this meeting and we come up with all these grand ideas and, and we have all these votes and then the next day it just goes away and the only ones that know about it are the people sitting in this room because that's how it works. And then you could have people in this room that interpret it the wrong way and go back and take all this information and send it out there and it's all wrong information. So if we had to, to grapple that and tackle that, I think that, that's a win for me, I don't know. I'll just have to set Paul up with Facebook and he'll be the administrator.
That's what we're doing, retirement.
Right.
Be the Facebook administrator.
Better than Snapchat, I guess. Well, that was, that was some of it. The prime example was the 750,000, the Building Committee went in for the article for. A lot of people had no idea the Building Committee was meeting and what the meetings were on. Now, granted, it's their responsibility to go on to the website and do that, but that's not, nowadays, people go home, they check their, their Facebook page and see what's going on and that's what used to be the news people. They, they take a lot of information from Facebook, from these, these, they don't even read, they don't even watch the televised TV show news anymore, they're taking it off Facebook and they can cherry pick what they want to watch and what they don't want to watch. So to me, it was just a, a vehicle to get to people, to get the message out to people from where we stand and why we made the decisions that we made versus just, they make assumptions and that assumptions don't get checked and they, you know, a lot of times they're way off base, it's not where they came from at all and there's no, there's no, not way to set it right, but there's no way to, to give why we did, made the decisions we gave.
But you can actually hide posts. If you are the, if you're the creator of the Facebook page and you don't like what a post is said, you can actually hide the post or delete it from your page.
Yes.
So if somebody wrote something so.
Right. You could pretty much.
You can just delete it.
You don't want to censor everything, but at the same time.
Right.
You could also say that this post is off topic.
Right.
This isn't, doesn't belong here.
Right, and it'll say taken down by the administrator or something like that and then they'll know that, no, this isn't the place for you want to go do that. You can go, you know, in your own little Facebook world.
Too many times and then they're gonna say, oh, they're censoring our page.
Right, you kind of have to be judicious.
Yeah, I think you need to be, you have to let people be angry in a, but also in a, in a nice way, yeah.
I just think a lot of the anger comes from, and not, not anger, but.
Frustration?
Frustration comes from they, they're not here at these meetings, they're not finding it on the channel, I just found it a couple of months ago, 95, which is our local channel, they're not finding on that. When you go on, there's no real breakdown of when our meeting's gonna be on, so it's hard to watch it on, on local access.
You can watch it on YouTube.
That's something that's, that's open to people, but how many people even know it's on YouTube?
Exactly.
You know, we have maybe 30 views on a good, on a, on a hot topic and.
One of the jobs, I think it's like 30 something.
I guarantee most of the views are probably sitting in this room, so.
Right.
It's not getting out to the, to the, to the masses, to the.
Well, I'll make a motion that, to try to do the Facebook page on a trial basis and I also would have Tim be the administrator of that Facebook page in the meantime.
Is that gonna be his full-time job?
Hold on.
No, it's not gonna take that.
It'll take up very little time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it becoming a big thing.
And the other thing we can do is link the YouTube to the Facebook page, so when something comes out, people can go and view it themselves and see us sitting here and having these discussions.
We'll do it for a 30-day period and see how.
And there's no charge from Facebook, correct? Put us on, all that stuff, so.
You can also verify the accounts, there'll be no ads on it and all sorts of good stuff like that, too.
Okay, I'll second it.
It won't make money on us.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay? First time I voted no.
Had it to it once?
Eh?
You had it to it once?
Well, had it just for us veto.
He doesn't get veto power.
I guess not. All right, next thing on the agenda is to discuss the health insurance rates as submitted by Maya. This has to do with retirees, Mr. Healy is gonna explain.
All right, MedX2 rates.
We also have, well, so he's also the Chairman of the Insurance, Life, Life Report.
Go ahead, Jack. MedX2, the MedX2 rates are going up, are not going up. The BlueMed RX is going from 131.57 to 154.64. It's a 17.53% increase. So the total on the MedX2 then is 292.28 and, and going from that number to 315.35 or a 7.89% increase for the MedX2. That's, that's the program with no copays. Now, you got, they can, competition is managed Blue for seniors, too. The individual plan is 143.13, there's no change. BlueMed RX is one, goes from 131.57 to 154.64, so it's 17.53%. For a total of 297.77, 8.4% increase. Now, as I said, MedX2 is, is, there's no copays and Managed Blue, there is a copay. So some retirees may want to make a change if they're, they go to the doctors a lot and they're paying a lot of copays, they might want to change from Managed Blue to MedX2. I went and talked to the Treasurer at Blackwater Hospital for getting this news out to our retirees, 38 of whom are on Managed Blue and 43 are on MedX2. And the deadline to get that information out to people so that they have time through the end of the year to make a decision on change is the end of this month. the end of the year to make a decision on, uh, changes, the end of this month. And Jessica is prepared to do that. Uh, Walter's, uh, I guess, gonna schedule a meeting of the insurance advisory committee as soon as possible.
Well, uh, just so the board is aware, I am the retirees representative on the insurance advisory committee, I was appointed to that position. Uh, actually, Mrs. Pacheco was the only member of the board at that time. Uh, it predates both of your appearances on the board. Since, uh, accepting that position, I've also, uh, assumed the chairmanship by vote of the yellow members of the committee. Uh, I became aware of the new health insurance rates for seniors, uh, this past Monday afternoon and I actually didn't get to see the numbers until Tuesday morning. I got a copy from the town hall. Uh, I, I took it upon myself to schedule a, an advisory meeting for Friday morning at ten o'clock at the town hall so that we were, we would be within the posting requirements to hold a meeting. However, it's my understanding that the acceptance or denial of these new rates which commence January one has to be received by Maya by October 31st, which is this coming Monday, which leaves us only, what, three more business days before that happens. Uh, if we hold a meeting on Friday and decide to accept the rates or not accept the rates, uh, we're not gonna be able to present that information before the board, you're not gonna be able to take that up because there's no meeting scheduled between now and Monday when Maya has to remain aware that, uh, we're accepting or are not accepting these rates. So essentially, I guess what I'm saying as the chairman of the insurance advisory committee, if the town is prepared to accept these new rates, uh, and I say the town, meaning the board of selectmen, if you're all willing to accept these new rates and vote that tonight so that the, the, uh, that information can be trans, uh, given back to Maya before the deadline, there's really no need of the insurance advisory committee meeting on Friday because our decision isn't what to be available until after that meeting and, uh, you know, it's, it's gonna be, be on the deadline before your meeting yet to accept that information. There are no structural changes to any of the plans that I'm aware of. Uh, and if you'll, if you, if you look at the figures that were provided, the increase is not in the medical plan, the increase is in the, uh, prescription portion, which is mandated, the prices are mandated by the federal government. Uh, and the, uh, MedX and, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield manages the prescription, uh, portion of the policy for the federal government. It's really a pass-through. So, uh, Maya can't change the rates and say, if there's a structural difference in the policy, you might save two dollars a month or whatever it might be. They can't do that because those figures, to my, uh, understanding, are mandated by the federal government, so they're, they're merely passing them through. Uh, so I, I guess what I, uh, and the, and the other issue is to, uh, you know, if people wanted to change from MedX, if the current forty-two members of retirees that are on MedX two, if they opted to, uh, choose the, uh, managed Blue for seniors rather than the MedX, they'd save approximately eighteen dollars a month. If it's, if it's really worth it to them to do that, then they, they can change their, they can change their selection of the plan, uh, during the, I believe it's the month of November.
Yeah, they, they don't have, they don't have until December 31st, I think it's the end of November.
I think, I think you're right. And, and one of the, uh, one of, I think one of the reasons that this caught us off guard a little bit is because the, uh, retiree benefits for healthcare formally mirrored the fiscal year that the employees, the current employees use for their, and the town uses for their healthcare coverage. About, uh, eighteen months ago, we were informed that there was gonna be a change in that, uh, system. The retirees', uh, post-Medicare benefits were going to now run on a calendar year instead of the fiscal year. So we're now gonna receive two sets of rates yearly. One set for the retirees will receive in the fall, as we just have, to commence January first. The set for the existing employees will be received probably in February, uh, of 2017 to commence on July one of seventeen. So, uh, that's basically the situation. That's basically the situation.
Walter, as I see it, the, um, the rates thems, the plans themselves, there's no increase, they're, they're staying the same.
That's correct.
And it's the same exact increase on the medication.
That's correct.
Through the plan, so...
That's correct. Because as I said, I do not believe those rates are set by Blue Cross Blue Shield or by Maya.
Right.
Uh, they are set by the federal government and then they pass through, uh, through Blue Cross who essentially is just managing that portion of the, the medical coverage, uh, for the federal government. That's, that's included in the, uh, the Affordable Care Act. That's all included in that.
We wanna, we waiting tonight? We want...
I don't wanna step on your power.
Well, uh, I, I also don't want the town to, on my, all, all the retirees that I'm representing, uh, be at Arrow because we've missed the deadline of October 31st. So, uh, essentially, it's up to you. I do have a meeting scheduled for Friday morning, which in fact, one of the members that represented from the police department is here now. I didn't realize we were gonna be here together, but, uh, we can go ahead and, and have that meeting and, and provide you with a, a decision.
Can we provisionally, can we provisionally vote on this as long as it...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
As long as they don't change it.
Correct. As long as it...
Or if they do change it, they need to let us know right away and then...
We'd have to have a quick meet.
Then we have to have a quick meeting.
Right.
On, on Monday.
Let's do that.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that's fine. That's what I, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we provisionally approve the, uh, the new rates. Uh, no change to MedX two, 160.71 stays the same. The BlueMedX prescription changes from 131.57 to 154.64 for a total of 315.35. And the managed Blue for seniors two, no rate change yet for individual of 143.13 with the same BlueMed, BlueMed, uh, MedX prescription coming from 131.57 to 154.64 for a total 297.77.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. So the way I understand this is that...
It's a provisional.
If, if his committee doesn't change anything and they agree with this...
Then we're good to go.
Then we're good to go.
It's approved.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. You went with us on that one.
I go with you on most of them.
You're a follower.
I'm a follower. It's the, it's the Facebook stuff that gets me.
Do you wanna, um...
Thank you.
Since we're gonna...
Thank you, I'll see you Friday morning.
Do you wanna get the building committee going and then we can just finish our business afterwards?
Uh, what do you wanna do?
We have a couple of things left to do.
All right, um... We're gonna do the, uh, if, if anybody wanna just do the minutes, everybody start the minutes, we can react quickly.
I'm making motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded through the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one we'll hold off on until after the building committee, we got two things to do.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so we'll hold off on those two things.
All right, so we're gonna hold off on the rest of our meeting and we are going to, uh, talk to the building committee. How about that? Anybody from the building committee?
Thanks, Walter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we...
You leave already?
We're selecting the selection or are we just running counter?
He's waiting.
You have to come back, okay?
Johnny, sir, hold on. Hey, I kept running into you today.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I'm adding you to that.
Oh, I just made sure the key was on.
Huh?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll put the, uh, I'll put the witch call, the, uh, sorry, margin.
I don't know anymore.
It's an accent, something that'll come and over.
Insurance? Yes, you can pass it around.
Take it.
We have a form?
Ally, do we have a form?
What is that form? What is that?
I'm missing Ben.
Ben's not gonna be here and I don't think the chief is, he's on vacation.
Yeah, he's not on, yeah, he's not, but Ben, Ben Walters, nothing.
And Tony Denault and everything.
Yeah, we have a form.
Jackie's not here.
Jackie, oh, yeah.
Jackie, Shaq, he's got it.
I see.
You're finding the mellow around here?
Jack's on. Where's Mary? Your bodyguard now wears a hat.
That's a very... Crocodile on the hat.
Don't fool around with him.
Guido. He's Guido, you know. The other day I'm going into the town...
Carmen San Diego.
I'm going into the town hall the other day and, uh, I waved to Mary, she's across the street and she, and she says, I got my bodyguard with me.
That's always called.
I said, well, that's why I'm not going.
Yeah.
She is throwing things at me. He's always five, remember to show up, always.
I was trying to get it down to you. Yeah, okay. Even though you didn't bring me the other night.
Fun game for somebody who's...
I was gonna let you have it, now I'm not gonna let you have it. Can you pass those off? Thank you.
Mr. Retires.
Yes, teacher.
Thank you.
Did you have a...
Hold it up, boy.
All right. Hi, everybody. Um, so let's just recap, um, kind of where, where we're at and where we're going and, um, also thank you for everybody that attended the town meeting and voted in favor of this article, um, 'cause it was important, 'cause it's the only way we can go forward. Um, that being said, in the meantime, before, at our last meeting and up until our town meeting, I've been working with Mark Rich. And, um, one of the things that Mark and I were discussing back and forth as well as Jack is, um, the engineering and the site evaluation. And the good news is, is that we do not need to go for, um, an RFP for engineering and site evaluation. So we do have a, an engineer that we do business with in-town, Kelly Engineering. Um, so I contacted, uh, David Kelly from Kelly Engineering and he, I told him exactly, kind of, well, exactly, I told him, um, what we're looking for and what we needed and, um, he came up with a scope of services. Um, so you have that in front of you right now and if you wanna just look it over, that would be great. Um, so they'll do all the field work that needs to be done, they'll look at the fifty acres, um, they'll locate the right-of-way, the property lines, um, they'll look at, uh, manhole covers and things like that that I don't think are there, but anyway, and, um, all that work will be done, um, under the licensed surveyor. Um, also, they're gonna do an aerial topographic survey for us, um, which will do some of the, um, spot checking, additional evaluations in the density of the trees, um, and they'll also give us a, a great picture of overhead of where we can really put, um, several buildings on that, on that fifty acre, um, parcel, um, so. And lastly, um, they'll have all the field work, um, completed for us and, um, put on paper. That's the preliminary phase of it. Um, the second part, and that, the part, um, that part of it is, will be about ninety-five hundred dollars, which is really kind of a really small price tag. Um, the second part of it, which I think, um, we would need to vote on, um, is not included in the first part and it's sort of what we're gonna be looking for as we get further and further down the line. It'll come up with, um, definitive, uh, site plan development for different buildings where, like, like we have been looking for a building with a basement. So they'll look at that and they'll tell us where that building would be ideally located within that fifty acre parcel. They'll do the wetlands flagging, um, and they'll do all the geotechnical, um, analysis. So if we do everything all together, the price tag for this is twenty thousand dollars out of the seven hundred and fifty that has been approved at town meeting.
Is that, she blew it, like ninety-five and the twenty?
The ninety-five is for the first set of it and then the, um, oh, the ten-five is for the second set of it.
Okay. Where does this part mean?
Where are you?
This is the one you were...
That's how that, uh, night, uh, that, a ten-five came...
Okay, so that's...
Right.
So in other words, that's the, the twenty thousand is the total price.
Is gonna be the total price.
Okay.
I mean, if we ask for anything additional and, and then you know that you have to pay the hourly rates down below, um, but those things would have to be, um, actually discussed by the, by the committee itself and then approved by the committee before we go and spend any more money. Yes.
The geotechnical survey, what does that include? Are we talking bore tests? Are we talking...
Yes.
Okay. Is it going to be bore tests just on site or do we bore test for the entire fifty acres?
No, he'll, he'll do spot sightings, um, within the fifty acre parcel, so it'll be up to his discretion, but if we needed anything more than what he thought was appropriate, then we could add that in.
Okay. Now, I just, I think, just another question, the, uh, the site, this fifty acres that we're talking about, there's, you said that there were other buildings, uh, or there were other buildings on the property?
Yeah, I mean, he's not gonna touch the highway and he's not gonna come near, um, the school, so he's gonna kind of have like a buffer of both of those places and then hone in. Well, I was talking about if there are any other buildings that we wanted to build on the property, that he, he would spec those out as well, telling us where, say we wanted to build the COA on there.
Okay, I was wondering.
So, right, so he would, he's gonna do it all, he's gonna do the whole, so it's not like we're looking for a specific project with a specific layout, he's gonna look at the whole, the whole property and tell us, you know, what, where's, where's buildable land, where's not so buildable land, where's the conservation land, where's the wetlands, you know, where's the best, um, spot for a building with a basement and so on and so forth.
Okay. All right, and he understands that we're looking for an autonomous piece of property for the, what's it?
That's the only way we can do...
The egress and entrance, the entrance and egress.
Right, and tho- those are the other things too, because I mean, he's gonna look the best place for the well, he's gonna look for the best place for the subtext, so, the best place for the roadway, so those things will all be defined once he gets, um, you know, uh, the first part of that, part one, and then in part two, it's when it gets a little more descriptive.
How about, um, is he gonna do perks too?
Yes. So...
He only has to perk the site, right? He doesn't have to perk the fifty acres.
Well, if we're gonna do multiple, if he wants to look for multiple buildings, you might wanna do more than one perk. Yes, for the police station, you only need the one, I guess, but if you, if he's looking for other, where you might place other buildings, you might, might have to do a perk for each building.
When we, when we had the site maps here, that we have an approximate, uh, number or, or percentage of what was wet, was that on it not, wasn't it? As I recall, there was...
Yeah, there was some of it.
There was some of it, sure.
Yeah.
But it wasn't that, it wasn't that much.
No, it was just down like quarter.
Right.
Yeah. But it was a percentage of tax, but I just wonder what the percentage was.
So I'm looking for direction because I, this is a committee and, um, you know, I think that this really saves us about a month and a half because if we're, maybe even more than, maybe even two months, because otherwise we'd have to go out and advertise, bring somebody in, listen to them and, I mean, Kelly Engineering has done, um, you know, some work for us before, we have a good relationship with them and I think that they gave us a, a figure that I think is workable in my estimation. But it wasn't that, it wasn't that much.
No, it was just down like quarter.
Right.
Yeah, but it was a percentage of tax, but I just wonder what the percentage was.
So, I'm looking for direction because this is a committee and, you know, I think that this really saves us about a month and a half, because if we're, maybe even more than, maybe even two months, because otherwise, we'd have to go out and advertise, bring somebody in, listen to them. And, I mean, Kelly Engineering has done, you know, some work for us before. We have a good relationship with them and I think that they gave us a figure that I think is workable, in my estimation.
Do we have to go out this, this type of work?
No. Nope. Mark Rich told us that because we don't have a specific project with, you know, with plans right now, that this is looking at the whole parcel, that we don't have to. He actually came in and did a presentation, sort of, and spoke to the board, so it wasn't just my word, he spoke in front of us.
He did this at the last board meeting.
Right, and he did say that we don't have to go out for that.
Is he gonna look at any other sites or just that parcel?
Just that whole parcel. I mean, again, if there, if it comes back and that's not where we want to build the station, he did ask me that during our conversation, he goes, "What is your backup?" And I said, "We could build at the current police station site and, you know, eventually knock that site, knock that building down." He said, "Do you have any parcels that you have, that you want to look at?" And I said, "You know, there are some on the side of the fire station that we're looking at, but I think that before we get ahead of ourselves," I think that, he will do that, "but it'll be for an additional fee." And then, but this right here is for that 50-acre parcel, you know.
We do know that those are the sites, including the Hodge property, has some limitations. We know that.
Yeah, the wet, the wet, the wet.
Information.
Especially near you, right?
Yeah.
So, it's the entire possible parcel that's available?
Fifty acres.
Okay.
Yep.
To me, this is, this is the smartest way to go about it, because we'll know what we can put. In addition to the police station, further planning, we're gonna have all this information.
Yeah, we gotta, we probably do all of that, so we're not-
No matter what goes here, we don't have to.
Yeah, so that we'll know where, where they can lock it.
So, I would need a motion from the board to, or I need to accept the David Kelly Engineering proposal. As soon as I get this to him, should we have a positive vote on this, I think he's willing to start as soon as possible. The only thing I need to do is have this run by Co-Commitment and Page, which they already have, but I just have to have them run by it one more time and then we can sign off on it. So, I just need a motion. Do I have a second? A second? Okay, I have a motion in a second, and can we just make sure we're all talking about this? We want all parts of this correct for the $20,000. Okay. I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll send out an email to everybody to let you know when, when he's starting and then maybe even midway, he can come in and do a presentation and then we'll have him do, you know, his presentation at the end. So, then at least, if we have halfway through this and we have questions and we want him to do other areas, we can address those at that time.
How would, excuse me, go ahead, Mary, you finish that. No, 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 I was just gonna answer about Boydish.
Well, I was just gonna ask that, for the future, if we could have a big whiteboard or some kind of display board that we can use at meetings, so that, okay, we have this map of the 50 acres, here it is, and then when he comes in, so that we can have something visual, we're ongoing, you know, and I don't know if can be put away someplace here and bring it out every time, so that it's not so abstract when we're talking.
Maybe we can do it with a TV.
We oughta be able to do it with a laptop and a television, it's all set up, we use it all the time.
And I think that once he gets that aerial view, I think that it'll be, it'll be so much easier.
Yeah, I would like to see what it is.
Yeah, once he gets the first part of this done and we get that, because it's part of his task is to get that to us, so once he gets that to us, then certainly, I think that that would be a great idea.
And I just think we, you know, so often the meetings are done, we don't have easels, we don't have visual things, I know that's a teacher in me, but, I mean, it really helps for everybody to see and have a better idea of what's, what we're talking about.
Plus, we all be, be on the same page when we're all imagining our own-
Yeah, I don't know, you know.
Right. And I think that that'll be good, because once we stop coming up with design concerns and things that we want, if we have those all on a whiteboard or paper, we can all see what's, you know, most important and least important, but things that we still want.
I mean, if it's always on a certain format that can be utilized with your laptop or, so that we can project it.
Mm-hmm, agree.
Do we have-
Yeah, I agree that, I think that's probably a good idea.
We won't even have to worry about storing it anywhere.
Yeah. Probably leave, if we had easels and, or a whiteboard, a couple of whiteboards, we could probably leave them here and then we can just pull them out while we need them. Perfect.
How about a motion from the board that, once this comes back from, I think, we take a vote right now, we can sign this, once it comes back-
Perfect.
We can just walk in and sign it, instead of having a meeting, is there a motion?
You wanna do that afterwards, when, go back as selectman, or you wanna do it now?
Well, we're still in the, I'm still in the meeting.
We're still in the meeting.
That's fine, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in Sunday, to, once it comes back from Co-Commitment and Page, that we can just come in and sign it. This is the vote to sign this. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, before we went forward with, we have a warrant audit that allows us to go out for an OPM, so the thinking is, is that we, we could do this simultaneously, we could have the engineering and now, because that's gonna be done and being worked on, to go out for the OPM. And then that way, once we get the OPM on board, he can probably look at the end of the engineering study and now, now we're in a perfect position in case the OPM has any further questions, engineer is still on call with us and still available. So, I think that our, the next part of this is to go out for an OPM, but I really need to garner what direction you want to go into with the OPM and things that you want to see in the OPM before we go out to advertise. Jack, you might want to talk to the committee about what you've done so far on the article or the-
Yeah, I prepared the solicitation for the OPM. In fact, I had initially put it on the central register just prior to hearing from Lisa that she wanted to get this meeting taken care of first. So, I called them back and they said, "Well, we can't hold this ad, 'cause it's gonna come out the day after the town meeting." I thought if it passed, we'd have a jump on it, trying to save some time, because it's gonna be a tight window between now and the next annual town meeting, to get the OPM on board, to hire an architect, to get that all done and have the design plans ready and an estimate of the cost, so that we can go to a town meeting with a final approval to go forward with this at the annual town meeting. So, that's why Lisa's suggesting that we, to some extent, get into the process of the OPM at the same time that we're doing the engineering work. So, as I said, it was on last Wednesday, it'll be off this Wednesday, it's not gonna be here the second week. We've taken down the names and phone numbers and things of all the people that have called in, and we certainly can re-contact them when we do advertise it again. We also have to put an ad in the newspaper. We're ready to do that, but we haven't done, so if, my, my main concern is that, I think, if you want to really try and hit that town meeting date in the spring, we gotta, we have to crank. And so, I think it would be wise to do this simultaneously to some extent, the engineering work, and that's, that's the final issue tonight, I think, right?
Yeah, well, there's one more thing that we can talk about, but the OPM, everybody knows we can't go forward without the architects or anything else unless we have that person on board. And really, I think that we've done a great job up until now, but I, now we need like the real experts to come in and help us out and guide us to the end of this, so we can, we can be ready. Although, we couldn't go out for an OPM before the Board of Selectmen adopted these procedures, which really needed to be done before going out for an OPM, so Mark made us aware of that and we'll take care of that at the end of the meeting. But I really think that, like, this OPM is all of ours, it's not just the Board of Selectmen and it's not just the town administrators, it's, it's a person that's gonna be working for us. And that person's gonna come in and do a spiel and we'll hire the person that we think is best suited to do the job for us. So, it's not the lowest bidder and it's not this or that, it's the person that we feel is gonna do the best job for us. But that being said, is there any qualifications or anything that you want to see in the OPM that we ensure is part of the proposal?
I'd like to see somebody that has some municipal experience or some significant municipal experience. Not all OPMs do, not all OPMs have police department, police station. I guess there's different, from the research I've done, there's kind of different subsets. Schools are really their own animal, for OPMs, they, there's so many different variables to a school, so I'd like to see somebody that has municipal experience and-
Probably.
I would like to see a police station experience.
A police station.
Absolutely. I'd, I'd-
Yeah, it's not that way.
Do you want to hit on some of the points that were in there, Jack?
I didn't bring it.
Okay.
What are some of the other things normally for the criteria for this person?
You would probably look into anything with, you know, background, backgrounds that that person is not-
What is required, I guess, what is required for a person?
You wanna know? Does he have to be an engineer or anything like that? I mean, can he be, he can't be Samuel off the street. No, not Samuel off the street. He has to meet the OPM qualifications that are in the design selection process. And-
Those are pretty straightforward as well.
And they also require them to have, to lay out all the experience that they've had and who the different people on the team, you know, are gonna be. And the OPM has gotta have, had experience, we can, we can have specified specifically in bringing to conclusion from beginning to the end, a police station and how many of them, you know, I think we've got a number in there in terms of the minimum number, I think it's at least three, maybe five, that they've worked on.
Yeah.
Are they licensed?
Yeah, they have to be licensed.
Oh, yeah, they have to be.
So, they have to have a license?
Yeah, and they have to spell this all out, all the spell, their, just for the-
Every bond is there, I mean, insured and all that.
That's all mandated, anyway.
Sometimes wait things, have we ever used an OPM on any project?
There is a procedure for evaluating the OPM.
Yep.
And you, you have to grade them as the highly advantageous, advantageous, not so advantageous. And use that ranking system in order to decide who you want to hire.
The committee would do that.
Yeah, the committee would-
Like, interview someone.
Before we, once the, the OPM goes out on the central register and we get them all back in, there'll be a certain criteria that they'd have to meet and the board would, the board, the committee would come up with what that criteria is. And we would have all those packets in front of us and we would rate them, right? You'd take your packet home, you'd rate them, I'd take mine. And then, just like an interview process, then we'd come together and we'd pick the top five. And then we discuss them and we may have, this one goes out and this one comes in for a better or worse reason. And then, once we decide we're gonna pick the top five, then we'd have a presentation by those top five people and it would be basically, what can you do for us?
We'd rank them again at that point.
Right.
Now, one of the most important rules of the OPM is to, is to look at every facet of the, of the building process and try to save us money in terms of the construction. And that's an important factor to rate them on as well. But, you know, I can circulate, we have, we have to decide, I guess that's your last item, Mr. Chairman, Jim, the-
I can be a mister for it.
No, you're pure. The makeup of the police station building.
Yeah, so-
No math.
So, I'm gonna forward this, sort of like a contract for an OPM, so you guys can all look at it. It really is, it's, it's from Co-Commitment and Page, it's, Jack did some wordsmithing to it, it's very basic. It's, it's actually, once this is out and on the street, it's when they come in, it's what you feel about that company and how you get a certain, you'll know, you'll know what company is gonna work for you and what company is not gonna work for you, just when they come in and do their presentation. But I think that this committee really's done all of its work so far. Now that we're honing in on the police station itself, I just need to put out there, like, maybe everybody on this committee doesn't want to be on the police station committee, maybe, 'cause this board's, this committee's still gonna be doing more. They're gonna still be talking about the senior center and libraries, which I have to talk about in a second, and the sewer line and the town hall, those are still things that this committee has to come up with a timeline and still has to talk about. That can't go away, 'cause if it does, it's never gonna come back on the table, I truly feel that. If we let that go, it's not gonna come back and I think that we really need to keep that current and keep that, sort of like a master plan for our buildings, keep going.
What size committee do you want?
Something, I, I didn't have a number, but I just think it should be manageable.
Something manageable?
And maybe there are people who aren't here that would be interested to-
Right, so we talked about this at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Maybe some people here don't want to be on the police station planning committee, maybe they're, maybe they're the building committee. They, they want to stay on this committee, but they just want to work on this committee and maybe not the police station committee. But that being said, there are also people in the community that have an engineering background, that have site background, that, you know, are project managers somewhere else or something, that can actually really help us out. So, I think that we should put that out to people that are out there, to see if they want to be on the committee. But I also think that that should be a short window, it's not like we're gonna be doing this for four months and then all of a sudden Joe Schmo's gonna come in and say, "Oh, I think I can help you." It's, you know, we'll advertise it, we'll put it out there and, and, you know, we'll decide from there. But I don't think that a, a committee of 50 is gonna, 'cause you're not gonna come to every meeting, because like Jack said, we don't have to go to the annual town meeting, we can make a town meeting for this project at any point. But I think that if we want to do this, if we want to break ground, say in the fall or next spring, this needs to get done within a six to nine month window. So, I don't have a magic answer, but I think that if the, if a person is qualified and is committed, then I think that they should be on the committee. I don't know, what do you think? What do you think?
I think our goal should be the annual town meeting, though. That should be a primary goal and if you have to extend, then we can have a special, but-
Absolutely.
I think our goal should be that.
Yes, I do.
Well, I'm a driver, it's getting something, you know.
We should have, it should be an odd number, so that way, if there's a vote, there's a majority.
So, 13?
It's a big board.
I think seven is too small.
Nine? Your quorum's gonna be four.
Five.
Five.
What do you think?
I was thinking seven, that's why I said four.
Thirteen's a nice number.
Thirteen.
It would give a nice cover for people that can't make it and spread out the workload.
Yeah, because you're not gonna end up being, there's gonna probably be subcommittees on that committee too. Who's gonna do the interior, who's gonna do the site, who's gonna do this, so those, that committee's gonna end up breaking down into, into a smaller committee along the way too.
And certainly, a lot of input from the police department, you know, when you get into the design work, that's gonna be-
I know Ben's interested in staying on as, as the committee, I'm interested, I've been approached by a couple of other people, we could ask, depending on how many slots that they want to open up.
Yeah, I mean, we don't wanna, you don't-
We don't want to take it open to the board.
You don't want to have it all police, you kind of want to make sure that you have a balance, not that you're gonna, make sure you're gonna take the information from what's here and get their feedback and then bring it back, so you're actually their representative. While I don't mind having maybe another police officer on board or the police chief on board, whomever you guys designate, I don't think the 13 should be made up.
Exactly, I agree.
I think there needs to be a balance.
Charlie's on the table.
Oh, yeah, Charlie.
Yeah, I don't, I have no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's on.
Should we limit how many people from this board on that and the rest will be open to, or vice versa, should, should we say there should still be three positions at large and the rest of the-
Yeah, I think, maybe we do, maybe we send it out there and see what we get, maybe we don't get anybody.
Well, why don't we ask here, anybody that doesn't want to be on it, because you don't want to kick anybody off the-
No, I'm not gonna kick anybody off.
Anybody doesn't want to be on the, there's one, okay, so we got one.
I'd rather go with what the committee at large is doing rather than isolate our-
Okay, I hear you.
Sense, like-
Okay.
Can we get to anybody else that doesn't want to be on it? All right, so, right off the bat, we've got two vacancies.
Right.
Well, it's the board this size, though. This size, this, we're already-
Huh?
This board, how many people on this board, Kelly? How many, they're supposed to be here, I suppose, Kelly?
Sixty. So, we're down to fourteen.
Fourteen and you're already the board.
I don't know about Jackie, would have to find out from Jackie and Charlie.
From Jackie, Charlie.
Jackie, Charlie.
Paul.
Whoever from the library.
And Paul.
They, they may want to feel-
Right, so that's three people, okay.
I think Charlie would want to be on it.
Yeah, I would think so.
I would think Charlie would want to be on it.
Yeah, I would think so.
I mean, that's given, so.
I don't, I don't mind it being, I just want it to be manageable, that we're not like all, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, if it's too big, it's too bad.
Right.
I don't need to be on it.
Yes, you do.
Oh, shit. If you're gonna make up spots, then-
No, you actually have a lot of planning boards.
That's fine, I don't mind.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no.
But if you're looking for spots, then.
No, I'm not, I don't, like I said, if we have to go up to fifteen, we go up to fifteen, what's two more people? You know what I mean? So I think that if we go up to fifteen, it's fifteen. I don't mind.
I think if you start going north of like fifteen to twenty.
I think once you hit seventeen, I think seventeen is the maximum number. So I think that if we put it out there and we have some really good qualified people that are willing to come in and help out, then that's great. But if we don't have anybody, then this is our committee. And you know what? We have done, I think, in my eyes, we've done all a great job so far. I think we can go forward, especially if we have a great OPM on board that's gonna guide us the rest of the way, so.
The other thing, I think that a lot of people wanna see this go forward, so they don't wanna see it cut short. So I think a lot of people are, are willing to be on this committee to make sure it exists.
Right.
In the meantime, if you were to get people from the community who were qualified, and, and, there, there might be people who say, well, seeing you have the numbers, I'll step aside so you can. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But, but unless that you do, then I'll stay and make sure that it doesn't go default, you know, that you have enough.
Yeah, I kind of feel the same.
Or, or maybe we have people that are voting members and maybe we have people that, you know, are associate members that just don't wanna have a vote, but wanna come in and put their two cents in. I don't have a, I mean, whatever, but let's see what we get and we'll go from there.
I think we all feel we wanna see this go forward and, and whatever it takes, you know, to move the market. But I mean, if you have someone that's, you know, a building contractor or something that has very, you know, a lot of knowledge or wants to be on it, or things like that, that. Be resources, you know, that's, that's something, that's something different, Joe, you know? That'll be beneficial.
Shouldn't we make up a criteria of who, who you'd like, like an engineer, a couple of engineers, a couple of people?
Yeah. What do you guys think? I, I said to put it out there for people that had building or municipal building experience that are part of the community.
That's your target, but you've still gotta get the people that are interested, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think that we can, we know people, so we can probably actually reach out to some people. Um, I know that somebody that lives right over there, works for the DUP, um, so he, he was a great asset on the building committee for the schools. He might be a great asset for the building committee here, you know, so.
Yeah, Mr. Lee, please.
Uh, Chris Ross.
You want me to get out to the other members the, uh, OPM ad and the candidate evaluation process?
Yeah, um, can you send me the candidate evaluation process?
Sure.
All right, thanks, 'cause I think that I have the OPM. I think that the, um, the, the warning for the OPM, like I said, is really cut and dry, it's from mock, it's a lot of illegal E's, you have to have this amount of liability. You have to be disqualified and that kinda thing, so.
Shouldn't we get that out?
Yeah. So, we will need a vote to go forward with the OPM as soon as the board, um, votes on the procedures.
We're gonna do that tonight?
Yes.
So, so we need to make a motion to.
This committee needs to make a motion to, uh, move forward with the OPM.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I need, uh, you need a motion from the board to accept the, uh, procedures.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Amazing how quickly things get done, huh? Something minds what.
October, um, Jack, if we put this in the central register at the end of next week?
Yeah.
How long did you, do you wanna go over the timeline?
Yeah. You have to have it in, uh, there's a timeframe that you have, you have to have a lead, lead up to when it appears in the newspaper, I mean, in the central register. You also have to put it in a, uh, in a newspaper for general circulation, of course. And, um, uh, and it has to be out for a matter of at least, uh, three or four weeks. We wanted to get, make sure that we get, uh, as many applications as possible. And it takes time to put that together. I, I had, uh, I had structured a, uh, a calendar that would've gotten us there, um, I think by the end of the, uh, to the, through the evaluation process. Right around the end of the, um, calendar year.
Yeah, that's what I have, too. I figure if we put it in the central register and they're due back somewhere before Thanksgiving and then, um, we evaluate them the first and second, uh, the, the second week in December, first or second week in December, we evaluate them and have them come in. We could actually have, I, I don't wanna go too close to Christmas, there's way too much to do for everybody, but I think that we could probably have some on board by the beginning of January. It's a tight timeframe, but I think it's doable. If they're due back in, in Thanksgiving and we meet the first week in December, have them come in the second week in December for a presentation, we could actually have them on board.
We're not gonna hold up Kelly Engineering from doing their site and stuff, though?
No.
Just, I don't wanna have frozen ground.
Nope, they're ready to go.
No, they can go.
They're, they're ready to go, they don't need an OPM. They, they don't need an OPM, they're ready to go.
So they can go to, once they get the call.
As soon as we get that sign, they're good to go.
So what do you, you're gonna advertise on thirty first, is that what you're thinking? Put it into the OPM, put it into the.
Yeah, I'll get it in as soon as I can. You know, is, uh, the nineteenth, when it's gonna be in the nineteenth, uh, I think it goes for two weeks. It's gonna come out on the twenty fourth and then we're gonna have to put it back in again, so.
Well, can you put it back in now?
So, no, I can't, it's too late for the twenty fourth, you know? That's.
Well, if, if you submit it, let's say you submit it tomorrow, even though it comes out on the twenty fourth, well, it, it, that'll start the clock again, won't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can put it in now, for the, for the thirty first.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Be a great day, trick or treat.
Right, that'll be perfect. All right. All right, anything else? I know this was a short meeting, but these things actually are a huge step, um, in going forward, so.
No, and, and actually, um, might be able to get it in on the twenty sixth.
Friday?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Today's the twenty sixth.
No, it's, it, yeah, it's down to thirty first, I didn't, 'cause it comes out on a Wednesday. So it's coming out again on the twenty sixth and we could get it back in again on the second.
Yep, all right.
Next one.
Yeah. All right.
You wanna, you wanna try and get them to return it by last weekend, maybe by the thirtieth?
Yeah.
November thirty?
That gives you a month.
Pretty much.
No sense in that, but, see, what is this guy thinks he would do?
That's a twenty-one day.
Well, it doesn't change.
Would you go on the twenty-third? It'd be the week after Thanksgiving, we'd get.
Thanksgiving is what, the twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth. If it's in on the first and it's due by the twenty-third.
It'll be the second.
In on the second.
Second.
Three weeks would be the twenty-third, if you wanna be.
That'd be twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days.
The thirtieth would be the twenty.
Thirtieth would, yeah. Thirtieth would work, I think, but you don't wanna cut it too short and then have people.
All right.
That's, that's first week of having responses in, so you should schedule a meeting for this for the, that first week in December?
Yeah. For the first initial evaluation.
Yeah.
You know, stop the interview process.
Happy birthday, we have on your birthday.
Yeah.
All the cake.
Where's Steve?
The fire chiefs here, 'cause we have too many candles.
You said it, my daughter's birthday.
I know, you keep saying that.
You're saying that, I should remember.
All right, that, like I said, that doesn't mean that you guys fall through the cracks, we have to keep moving and, and keep, uh, looking for ways to get all the other buildings done, but come up with the time.
We've got three other buildings.
Yeah.
I think Gary said something, we might have a problem with this on fire station and new truck.
Download, yeah.
Yeah.
That's something we maybe oughta start thinking about a little bit, too.
I don't, when we were talking about the library and we were talking about a central library, does anybody remember any conversation of keeping the other two libraries open?
No.
No.
Okay.
It was just a question.
That was in the initial, that was in the early one, that was all.
That came to me this week, so when we started to talk about the libraries, we kinda think that there's any way that we can keep all three libraries open.
Why would you even want?
I, I don't know, no.
We talked about like our house, where they.
Yeah, we talked about, right.
For the Hathaway.
Right, but I talked to, I talked to members of the library commission this week and they have no intention of closing the sun on that library. I like, I don't know how you're gonna have one central library and keep that open, 'cause I just don't know, I don't know how that's gonna work, so we need to get that clarified.
I thought one of the concerns with the library was there's no water down there, there's no facilities down there.
Right.
Hathaway, no.
Who makes that final decision?
Huh?
Who makes that final decision if they remain open or closed?
Well, I think it comes down to funding of what, what needs, what can be funded. And if we're only gonna fund one library, then we're gonna fund one library, but I don't know, but I.
Well, I think that, that.
Is that a library commit, not?
Yeah, I would think that would be, they, as the committee, they would put it forward and then, you know, vote whether yes, no, or how they were gonna do it. I mean, the White Library is not our building.
It's a trust, right? That's a library trust, that's owned by it.
So, you know, there'll have to be plays on what's gonna happen with.
With the existing.
And what's, how it's gonna work.
That needs to be clarified. That needs to be clarified, so.
I think what happened to make the decision is whether it's gonna be in part, as part of the, uh, the town hall renovations and expansion into the schoolhouse and at the library there, whether it's gonna be in the central location. That needs to be, if that decision was made, uh, then we could move on from there and decide how that was gonna go to work. The central issue here is, no pun intended, that, uh, that people on, on, in Eastfri Town, uh, want to have it in, in as close a proximity as the folks in the zone. And, or a lot of them do.
Where are you getting this data from?
Let's go back to that again.
Where do you get this data from? I think everybody would be certainly happy with a central library.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
But you said closest proximity, then would they live, that's, that's the White Library right now.
Well, I, I wonder.
Of course, it's not, it's sort of a.
You can't have three libraries.
No, you can't have, I, yeah, you can't have three libraries, but first of all, I don't know how you're gonna get the funding for three libraries.
Can't have two libraries.
There's not enough staff for three libraries.
Well, I think it's definitely, before we decide about what we're gonna do with the library, decide what we're gonna do with the existing ones. You know, I, if they wanna keep that one, then there's, there's not to be libraries, let them just keep it.
Right.
It could easily come to that, yeah.
And I think that that's, that's, that's why it was important to have a library person on here.
Right.
Is to answer those questions, but we don't.
Oh, Moven was on, is on.
He's from precinct three and now I think he's gonna come on as a library person.
Oh.
But I think it's the, I, I don't know, do they all need to get, I have no idea.
Yes.
So, we have to, you're right, Paul, we need to get, we need to get that, like, we need to get that answer, because right now, from what was told to me, is that they have no intention of closing the other libraries. And if that's the case, and why we're talking about a central lo- location for a library.
All we can do is look at their minutes from the trustees' meetings to the library, they're posted, they're posted meetings and, um, their minutes should be posted. We certainly know that.
I think everyone was here when we talked about libraries, and if you look at what their wish list was, I mean, if they had a wish list like that and they're wanting to keep that building, it's, it doesn't make sense.
They didn't say that, or any, I mean, I.
No, and that's why I said I wanted to ask.
I'm saying if you look at the wish list they had for a new library, why would you keep that?
Right.
I think, I think what's.
I know. Yeah.
The wish rule.
Okay, we're fine. Um. You're good right now.
No, I was gonna say something else.
Okay, but, that's good. Um, I don't know if anybody wants a copy of the procedures for, um, the designer, um, selection, but I'll just pass those out. Those come from Mac Rich, probably good to review so we all know we're on the same page.
Six.
Do you have a motion to adjourn the building committee, or do you have anything else? Nothing else? I'm just asking you, Paul, right now. Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes. There you go, Paul.
Somebody pull the plug.
You're on, but. You're on.
June the sixteenth.
Can't, maybe, maybe why?
It's the night that we leave.
Vacation.
Yeah, we're going to Memphis, I can't go, I looked up, I, I called yesterday and said yes, and then all of a sudden I look and I go, what's the cheat on that again? And I go. I actually thought about meeting the next morning, but I was like, why, why are you gonna do that? You'll throw me under the bus, you too. Um, yeah, we'll take a five minute break.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, we're gonna turn this over to, uh, uh, I don't know why this is.
I'm done.
No, you're not, why this, shouldn't this be down in here?
Personnel.
That's personnel, two personnel things. We're gonna turn it over to the personnel chairman, yeah?
That's not personnel.
That's not personnel, okay, before we turn it over to personnel, we have a letter from Lynn Rocha, uh, asking for a pay raise for her videotaping. Lynn, can you pan yourself?
I can't, I have no teeth now, either.
Oh, man.
So it's not a good sign.
Okay. That's, all right.
I was just going there.
Where are we?
Where is this? I need to.
Page nineteen.
Okay. No, I need to pull it up, okay. I, I need to give you my, um, iPad? Yeah. It's not working.
You want, you want to?
No, I can see.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, this is from, uh, from Lynn. It says, uh, dear honorable selectman, I am taking this opportunity to request a raise in my rate, as your videographer, video editor for the town of Freetown. I've been a loyal, dedicated employee of FreeCam for the past five years and have always produced quality work for your town. In the beginning, before Freetown had any of, of its own equipment, I used my own camera. And when our tripod broke, I devised a solution so that the town would not have to purchase another tripod. I would like an increase in pay of twenty-five dollars for my videography and twenty-five dollars for my editing. This would make my pay a hundred fifty dollars and, uh, instead of one hundred dollars. I ask that you consider my request, thank you very much for your time and consideration in this matter. Okay, so Lynn sent us a letter, see what the board wants to do.
Where does this money come from? It comes from the, um, IT, I think. I have to look.
Does it come from the reimbursement part that we get from Comcast?
It should.
So I'm not sure, I'd have to look at the exact budget.
Okay, but Comcast reimburses us quite a bit, I mean.
Right, so it should definitely come from the reimbursement from Comcast and that's, do you know what that is?
I know.
Okay.
What budget I have to get from, when I pay it.
I, I do have a question for Lynn. If you get the raise, will you all look better on camera?
Oh, definitely.
Can you, um, talk to him about the Comcast, the line item for Comcast? You get, there's a certain percentage that everybody gets billed on their Comcast bill and that gets, that goes back to the town, right?
Now, I had a question about that. We're on, I don't know if it's even part of this, but we're on, FreeCam runs under the, um, Middleborough Access Agreement.
Yes. We pay, we pay a hundred and twenty-five hundred a year.
We're almost a sub-thought on the channel, where I know we've discussed the channel a little bit here tonight, but on that channel, we're not advertised on that channel, it's hard to find when we're gonna meet. It's just random draw, every once in a while, I'll click it on and it's never on.
I never find this.
So, I mean, it's a good thing, 'cause I'm self-conscious, I'm going balls, we haven't known, but.
It's early.
No, it does, truly, i- if you go on to, if you go on to Lakeville's, um, especially the schools, the schools' channel, it's clear, it's crisp, the, the, it's, everything's on there, you can see what's going on and when. The, the site's really lit out nice and I, I don't know when our agreement's up with Middleborough, um, to be on their, on their channel, if we can have our own, if we could piggyback off maybe off the schools or how that would work.
It would cost you more money. Well, we had, if I'm, I'm doing this from memory, okay?
Yeah.
This goes back maybe five years, has to be five years.
It should be up pretty soon, if that.
There was a big, there was a, there was an issue with, we were gonna go with, uh, Lake, Lake Cameron, I guess it's called.
Lake, yeah.
And they had, the contractors had so many stipulations in it, plus the cost was just incredible. And there was some discussion about equipment that was taken from the elementary school, it was a big rigmarole. Now, if you look at how Lakeville has it set up, if you go into the, uh, the, what's that, uh, room, it's not the, uh, is that the library? It's not the library.
Downstairs.
The library?
Yeah.
Yeah, we go in there, I mean, they've got everything pre-wired and, and when you go into the Lakeville Town Hall, everything is pre-wired, they, they control everything from another room, all the cameras are moved and everything else.
They, they control everything from another room, all the cameras moving and everything else. So, I mean, that's a completely different operation. That's why it's so clear and everything. You've got cameras coming from every different angle.
It's like a studio.
Yeah, it's a studio. They got a studio in the library, they got a studio in the, in, in the selectman's office, in the town hall, where they meet. So, I don't.
So how about this? In our design plans, perhaps in that room that's going to be the community room.
For the police station.
For the police station, we should probably think about making that, because other people are going to have meetings there. So if we were to do another agreement with Middleborough, I think I would, I would limit the amount of time that we do it. And if we can get, if that goes through and we can get everything, all of our needs in that one room, we could have every single meeting broadcast the way Lakeville does. That would be really awesome.
You see Lakeville, they have basketball games going on and everything.
My other question was more also towards, back to, to, towards the high school. Is there classes? Do they offer classes for that?
I don't know. The students do do, um, it might be an after-school kind of thing, but they do do, uh.
There's no media relation class on media?
I don't know.
Media classes?
I don't know.
Lynn, what's this, Middleborough, I mean, how often does that stuff get shown? I mean, nobody.
Your, your stuff gets shown on the weekends, on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and there is a regular time for it. I'm not aware of your times. I can't check that out for you.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's broadcast at a particular time each day. And it's broadcast, the minute I get this done tonight, tomorrow afternoon, I will edit it so that it's ready for Friday. There is no delay. You know, you get immediate.
So you take it over to?
I take it over to Middleborough, I edit it, and then it gets uploaded to the server.
But we only have three days a week that it's on?
You, you have the weekend.
It's the weekend.
Weekend, but it's several times during the.
But I've seen it like midnight, um, it, it's almost like it's a filler. It's on odd times sometimes.
Well, you can talk to Karen.
But I don't know the time slots.
You can talk, you can talk to Karen Troy about that. She's the, she is the, uh, station manager.
Yeah, let me, let me follow up on that, but.
Okay.
I know them, I know them well. You know, I, I can get all that information. Instead of doing anything, they can do anything better for us. I mean, can't we put notices on? Like, uh?
Sure you can.
Yeah.
I put the notice on for the, um, uh, uh, there was an event that somebody came in and they were, they were having, uh, and then the, um, uh, the, uh, recycling.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the type of thing.
Wait, the thing is, and it's like anything else, if you ask, if you took a hundred people that live in town and you asked them what channel it's on, I'd be surprised if you got ten percent that knew what channel it's on.
Well, I think it's indicative of cable in general, because if you, let's face it, Paul, if you have HBO and you're sitting at home and you're going, let's see, it's Monday, it's Monday night, am I going to watch Game of Thrones or the Free Town Selectment? Who do you think is going to win?
It, it's pretty close.
It's pretty close.
I have to admit. You have a comedy team up here.
You know, she says, you have a comedy team up here, and she points outward. You're part of the comedy team.
I, I think that the cable part of it is just one piece. I think that that sort of is a dying breed right now. I don't, you're right. I don't think anybody, I can't say anybody. If I'm looking for something specific, I'm not going to wait until Saturday to watch it on cable. I'm actually going to go to YouTube and I'm going to bring it up and I'm going to watch it right then and there, and I'm going to go to the specific part where I need to see, because that's just what I did the other day.
Well, the other thing. Tell us what the exact part it was.
The other thing is the guide, like, you put it, the guide on and it doesn't say general, it just says government access. It doesn't say Free Town Government Access, doesn't say Middleborough. So if you, like, my wife loves the guide, so she thumbs through everything on the guide. Well, you're not going to see what it is, because it just says government access.
Right.
So.
Well, that is, that is a function of Comcast.
Right.
That is not a function of anything that I have.
Right, and I'm not even talking about you directly. I'm just saying, you, since we brought up the, the, this issue and gets us into the cable, you know, and, and broadcasting.
Does Lakeville come up saying Lakeville?
Just says general government.
Yeah, because that's all the way Comcast.
So you can't see, okay, if the Free Town meeting is going to be on, I'll tape it, because I, I'm not going to be able to watch it at that time. It's just hit or miss. You go on and maybe you see it, maybe you don't. Usually it's, you don't.
Basically, that's because they do it for nothing. They have to do it under the FCC rules.
Right. But if we had some control over it, it would be.
We're not, we're not going to have control, I mean, Lakeville doesn't have control, because it comes up the same way. In other words, we're not going to have control with Comcast.
The thing with Lakeville is, it's their channel, so everything you see is all Lake, is all Lakeville. So you see their story hour at the library, you see Mr., what should call it.
But in that aspect, Lisa, you would have to hire a program director dedicated to the town of Free Town. You wouldn't get a wage scot-free, like you get the service from me, I'm a contract player. You would have to hire a program director who would be responsible for getting volunteers or getting, or going out themselves, shooting that program, shooting the library, uh, the toucher truck, the, uh, the whatever, and, and then coming back, editing it, and then putting it on the air. You'd have to have the expense of a channel, you have to have the expensive equipment, and you have to have the expense of a full-time program director.
That was the whole issue five years ago, because they have, they have a program director. They have, oh, it's like a separate sub. It's part of their, their town organization and tha, that's why they, they came up.
They put a lot of money into that lineup.
Yeah, and they came, they came up with these, with the rates that were just out of this world. Yeah, they wanted to, they basically wanted Free Town to join in and share in that cost.
Right, but if we're going to do something like we talked about a little while ago at, you know, in the community room, then we need to make sure that whatever programming we have is going to get on cable at the appropriate times. Like, I'd hate to put all of, all kinds of money into having that room and then still having the same thing.
We'd have to get our own channel.
We'd have to do something, because I think it wouldn't even make sense at that point.
We talked about that. In fact, you brought, uh.
Yeah, Alex Stiles. I don't know whatever happened to that. He was supposed to come back.
And what's his name, uh, Reverend Dias came in, remember when we were talking about that?
They were supposed to go to Free Town and check that out, because we have the.
There was equipment over at the, at the, at Grace.
No, not Grace, the elementary school.
The elementary school over here. And then they come back and say it was all gone.
It was all gone.
Yeah, disappeared.
It disappeared. It went to, it went to Lake.
It went to Lakeville.
Okay.
But there was a cable committee and maybe, you know, maybe once we do have a room like that, then we put back the cable committee.
Well, I just think, you know, we had that discussion with Facebook earlier, and I think some of this is because of that. Some of that discussion is carryover from this, because it's impossible to find this on, on cable.
Yeah, I was myself.
It's hard to, if YouTube, if, okay, if you, if you're savvy enough to look for it, oh, that's fine, but a lot of people don't have YouTube accounts. They don't know how to use YouTube. They're not familiar with it. Um, so it, that's all, I was just tying it all together.
But do we, do we take our YouTube and bring it up to the Free Town Town Hall page or no? I think that's.
There's a link there too.
We could put a link on it.
We need to put a link on and do that then.
Okay, back to.
All right. So you're going to find out where the, where the money comes from, right?
Who?
Jack?
Oh, yeah.
You're going to see how much money is in that account?
Yep.
We can't go for a line item transfer from the, from the, um, IT budget.
No, we're shot on IT. We've got to find out where she's paying from.
Yeah. No, I think it comes from cable public access. I think I misspoke. I don't think it comes from IT.
Okay, so it comes from cable.
Cable public access. And do we have enough money in that account? I think we have plenty of money in that account. Okay.
Anybody want, does anybody want to make a motion?
Uh, there's one more question, Lynn. How, what? How many hours aver, average, not hours, how many, how, what do you, what do you word it as?
Assignments.
Assignments, do you, uh, average a year?
Well, it, it's difficult, because I generally take, uh, January and February off and I have somebody cover for me, because I do not like to travel in, in clement weather. So, it depends upon how many.
But you do that at your expense.
I do that at my expense.
So that comes out of this, that, this wasn't, won't change for that person. You pay that person. We pay you anyhow and that, you pay that person?
We pay that person.
No, you pay that person.
We pay that person.
So say thirty meetings a year?
That's a bit more than that.
Three meetings a month?
Yeah.
Thirty-six.
Oh, she's only doing ten months.
No, we have to pay the other person.
You're going to pay the other person the same thing, right?
We pay the other person the same time.
You're going to pay the other person the same thing?
No.
No?
No, I've been here for five years. I deserve, I deserve the benefit of that.
That's why I said ten months. I got you back, Lynn.
Let's say, let's say forty assignments.
Forty assignments.
Because we have, you have building committee assignments that's extra now that we didn't have to have.
Yeah, so forty assignments times a hundred and fifty.
Well, thanks.
Six thousand, the difference is, is fifty dollars, so it's two thousand difference per in.
Yeah.
And we have money, I would think. I mean, you can make the motion contingent upon that we have money, but I, I think we have plenty. We had enough, plenty of money.
I think it's, I think it's in the mid-sixties.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I think is up. Yeah, but we can use that to buy equipment, and that's what we need to do.
In the future, we're going to have to do that.
Yeah.
That's what it's.
My, my budget was a lot higher than.
It could be more than that. Last time I looked was like a couple of years or so. It might be far more than that.
All right.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made in second.
For Lynn only.
Lynn only.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome. There's a part that I've been treading.
You know what? I was going to, uh, vote no Lynn, but I figured you'd zoom in on me and make me really look terrible, so I had to go along with it.
Well, I have to keep you as many close-ups as I can before April.
Here we go.
Here we go.
On that note.
Uh, here we go. All right, she's got me blushing now. Okay, it's now in the hands of the personnel chairman.
Yep, I'm going to make this nice and sweet, uh, in a unanimous decision. The library interview committee, um, picked Denise Channard as the top candidate. She actually scored the highest, so.
Make your motion to appoint.